Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-sixth. In compliance with state law, city councils, special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing. With that, I'm calling this meeting to order, and Christopher, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltes, here. Councilmember Porter, here. Councilmember Hartsock, here. Councilmember Harjhausen, Councilmember Simomo, here. Mayor Pro Tem Smith, here. Mayor Wagner, here. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, and I entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Harjhausen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Harjhausen. All those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? She has been excused. Thank you. With that, if everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for that. Next up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mayor.
Thank you, Regan. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next up is one of two public communications. We have a presentation about Cedar Hills landfill by King County Solid Waste Division. And I believe we have Amy Aukerlander and John Walsh here. So John, are you giving the presentation tonight? Or is Amy? Okay. Welcome, John, and welcome, Amy. Thank you for being here tonight.
Hello. Yeah, sorry, I just got promoted to pants. Yeah, I'm gonna do a presentation. It's actually on a program we call Re Plus, so it's not so much on the landfill. It's about recycling and waste prevention, so.
Okay.
But should I just jump into it?
Yep, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Let me try to share my presentation here. Hopefully this goes okay. All right. Are people able to just see the presentation piece, or do you see all my notes and stuff?
We see your notes. See your notes also.
Let's see. Is that working? Is that better?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, cool. All right, cool. Yeah, so my name's John Walsh. I'm the Strategy and Performance Section Manager for King County Solid Waste Division. And then we have Amy Aukerlander. She's also our Government Relations Person in King County Solid Waste. Yeah, just doing a very quick presentation on a new program we called Re Plus. It's focused on improving waste diversion and recycling. Hopefully you saw that GIF playing. It's kind of this rolodex, and it sort of helps explain why we landed on the name Re Plus. But in essence, when you think about ways to reduce your race, your waste, you know, it really starts, all those words start with re, right? So you could like recycle that piece of paper, you could reuse that water bottle, repair that bike, restore that piece of furniture, reduce your consumption, just kind of rethink about your purchases, right? So pretty much every single thing that you can think of starts with the word re. So really what we want to have happen here is before you throw that thing away, we want to, you know, we want people to see if they can re-plus it instead. It's kind of where we're coming from. Here's the mission and vision statement, right? So, you know, really what Re Plus is about is it's a program to help us achieve what we call zero waste of resources, right? So about seventy percent of what is currently being thrown away is actually like useful materials, right? It's things like cardboard, or metal, or food, stuff like that. So these can all be put to better uses versus like throwing it away in the landfill, right? So the big goal of Re Plus is really to minimize our environmental impacts by moving towards a zero-waste future while also creating opportunities for everyone in King County to thrive, right? You know, it's really this, it's a, it's a call to action, right? And you see this in a lot of county and city documents, actually, right? So here's a, here's a couple of different examples here. The Strategic Climate Action Plan, you can see there's zero food waste in the landfill by 2030. Even in King County code, so it's actually codified that the goal is to achieve zero waste of resources by 2030 through, you know, prevention, reuse, recycling, things like that. King County Equity and Social Justice Strategic Plan. So as we're implementing Re Plus, right, it's really about trying to address some of the disproportionate impacts within our communities, as well as just again, trying to create opportunities for people to benefit and participate in Re Plus, right? Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. So this is a plan that's adopted by the cities and the county, and it kind of sets the sort of the framework for our system for the next twenty years. And so within there, there's a lot of policies around recycling, reduction, reuse, all that stuff. It's also got the 2030 goal for zero waste of resources. And then finally K4C, that's the King County Cities and Climate Collaboration. So there's a commitment in there also to the zero waste of resources goal. So I think I mentioned five times at least that there's the, you know, zero waste of resources goal by 2030. And, you know, that's a regional goal, right? And that's something that, you know, we, the county, all the cities, even the state, really has to participate in and take action on. Just to note, it's, you know, 2030 is only seven or so years away. So, you know, there's a really kind of a urgency to getting started on improving our waste reduction efforts. So here's a little more context on that before like getting into the actual Re Plus actions and the programs. You know, in our fifty-year history, we've done a lot of really good things. We were one of the first places to implement curbside collection of recyclables. We've done really good on construction and demolition recycling. You know, we've incorporated yard waste collection at the curb. So we've actually had a really pretty good recycling rate, right? So you can see on the graph that we're at fifty-four percent. The national average is around thirty-two percent in the United States, so we're, so we're well above the average. There's a couple of areas where we're lagging, right? There's a lot of cities and jurisdictions where, you know, garbage is collected every week, but recyclables is every other week. So, you know, that's something we're looking at. Extended producer responsibility. So this is basically putting, you know, more responsibility on like the Coca Colas and the Amazons, the people who create packaging to make sure that people know how to recycle their packaging, and that it's recyclable in the first place. And then banning food waste heading to the landfill. So food waste makes up about fifteen percent of the tons that get thrown away. It's a hundred thousand tons of food, which is a lot. And so, you know, there's some opportunities there to make sure that it doesn't go to the landfill and actually, you know, turns into compost or something else. One thing to note, I mean, look at that, that green graph there. We've really stagnated on our recycling rate. So even though I said fifty-four percent is great, it's been kind of, you know, the fifty, fifty-four percent for a while now. So we've kind of plateaued in our efforts there. And so Re Plus is gonna try to help us break through that and actually get to higher rates. You know, again, a reminder, seventy percent of what gets thrown away could have been recycled or reused or repaired. So there's a big opportunity there, right, to increase this rate. What does zero waste of resources look like? It looks like this, you know, about a half a million tons of less waste, you know, being thrown away. You know, we could save a million more trees, right, if we were able to recycle all that paper that's being thrown away. Of that food, there's a lot of edible food that people could still eat enough to feed about ninety-two thousand people. We estimate there could be five hundred or more jobs created out of this, right? We're getting a lot more people to collect this new material, process it. We're gonna build new capital infrastructure, so there's a lot of job creation. Twenty-four million in future disposal cost avoidance. So, you know, we haven't decided what disposal method we're gonna use after Cedar Hills closes, but if we were to say export all that waste, right? Each ton that we save is a, is a, is a lot of money saved on export costs. And then finally, if we were able to collect all of that plastic that's also being thrown away, we could also save, you know, a bunch of hundred fifty thousand barrels of oil from being burnt. So there's a lot of great environmental benefits, economic benefits to actually achieving some of our zero waste of resources goals. The initial focus of Re Plus is on the major categories of materials that currently get thrown away. And so these are called our fast-start actions, basically. So first up is organics. You can see that makes up about twenty-eight percent of what goes to the landfill. So this is like food, yard waste, wood waste, things like that, right? So one of the first actions actually has already passed. It was a Washington State organics legislation. It was called House Bill seventeen ninety-nine. And so passed earlier this year, and it was a comprehensive organics management bill that improves access to organics collection, strengthens food donation, and supports end markets for compost. Another big thing in this is it's gonna require businesses like, you know, cafeterias, malls, restaurants, places like that to actually start separating out their food waste. So a lot of these places just throw it in the trash. And so starting in 2024, some of the bigger businesses are gonna have to start separating that out. You can see some of the diversion potential and the greenhouse gas reductions from that. Another focus is single-family organics collection. So really, we're gonna start in the unincorporated King County area, because that's something that, you know, we control at the county. And so, you know, right now, we're just trying to gather data, but you know, we're kicking around a couple ideas here. So one of them could be actually requiring all curbside customers to have organics collection. Right now, it's kind of optional. You can implement a, implement a food waste ban. So similar to yard waste, right, you're not allowed to throw grass into your trash cans. This would be saying you're not allowed to throw a bunch of food in the trash can either. Or we could reduce garbage collection to every other week, which I think only Renton is the only city that does that right now. But we want to really, you know, check in with our customers, our residents, and see, you know, what kind of impacts these actions might have before making a decision there. And the last one is non-residential food waste recycling. That's quite a mouthful. We probably gotta change that name. But I mentioned earlier, you know, businesses are gonna have to start separating out that food waste, so we need a place for it all to go, right? So we're looking at a couple of different technologies here, you know, potentially anaerobic digestion of the food waste, which actually like helps generate more energy. So a lot of good work is going on. The organics area is a lot of opportunity to improve our waste diversion there. Another area is plastic and paper and other materials. Mentioned extended producer responsibility earlier. That was actually a bill that came up in the state legislation this year. Didn't pass, but it's looking at bringing it back next year. Mixed waste processing. So this is a, you know, it's kind of a last screen for recyclables that still get thrown away. Our focus is really to get people in their homes, businesses to, you know, separate out everything, right? Because that creates more cleaner recyclables. That stuff, you know, pays a lot more money. You get a lot more money for those types of things. But we also recognize that it's not always easy to sort, right? So some stuff's still gonna make its way into the trash. And so there's some technologies that use, you know, conveyor belts, cameras, robots to kind of pick some of that stuff off and still find value out of it. And then our last two, we have something called Next Cycle Washington. This is actually a statewide program. It's kind of like a business incubator, right? So we really want to tap into, you know, the smart environmental entrepreneurial people in King County, right, to come up with new innovative ways to increase waste waste reduction and recycling efforts, and then Re Plus Circular Economy Grants. So for each biennium, every two-year period, the county's gonna have two million dollars available to businesses, nonprofit cities, to again, implement actions that are aligned with Re Plus and waste prevention and recycling efforts. Last is the community. So we have a community panel of about ten members that we've been talking to, and really just trying to pick their brains on like, what are their priorities? You know, like, how is it best to communicate Re Plus and get their input for future efforts? Re Plus City Grant Propose, it's actually a separate bucket of money for, just for cities, right, to implement some actions that are aligned with Re Plus. And then city-county collaboration. So we want to start at meetings again with city recycling coordinators, just getting better alignment, you know, consistent messaging, right, standardized kind of approaches to increasing waste diversion. So, and then here's kind of the total estimated impacts of what we think these fast-start actions could achieve, right? So really high diversion potential. You're looking at four hundred thousand tons. Three hundred, three hundred thousand tons of metric tons of CO2 equivalent reduced. I know that's a lot, but that's the equivalent of basically a car driving seven hundred forty-four thousand miles. So if we're able to recycle this stuff instead of throw it away, that's kind of the equivalent there. So a lot of good environmental benefits. Couple of other things to consider, though, right? This, it's gonna cost money to implement Re Plus, right? Capital investment, staffing, all that stuff. So you could see potentially see increase in rates. It's gonna require behavior change, right? So again, if we want people to, as they're at that restaurant, instead of throwing in the trash, throwing it in the compost bin or the organics cart, that's gonna require some change there. But on the flip side, there's also an increase in jobs, right? So it's gonna, again, it's gonna, we're gonna need more people to process these materials and more capital investment, which means more jobs. So I think that's it, guys. That was really quick. Apologize for how quick it was. There's a lot of content there, but this was really just to kind of sort of do a quick overview for folks about this new program that we're trying to implement here. So any questions? And if not, here's, here's my contact information.
No, I was just gonna ask if you had time for questions, John. Does council have any questions? Joe?
Thank you, John, for taking the time tonight to give us this presentation. It's always interesting. I do have a couple of questions. My first one is how do you enforce a ban on food waste in the trash? I feel like with a city of Covington, twenty-two thousand people, that's kind of hard to go through, we'll say eleven thousand garbage cans and say, oh, we found a scrap of pizza in here. How do you enforce that?
Yeah, usually, I mean, Seattle tried to do this, right? It's the usual ways to use what's kind of like called an oops tag. So like, you know, as, as the trash is being picked up, you know, you might just put a oops tag on every single person's cart, because we know people throw away trash. So it's just kind of a nice reminder, like, hey, you should not be putting the food waste in the trash. It should be going in your compost bin. That's kind of a lesser invasive way than say, you know, somebody looking in your garbage to see if there's food there. So that's sort of the more like, one of the ways to get at it. But you're right, the enforcement piece of a food ban is really the more difficult and expensive piece of that type of program, so.
And then what about pet waste? Does that, would that be one of those items that go into an organics, or is that stay in the trash? Because I'm gonna guarantee you that it's gonna stay in the trash if my wife has anything to say about it.
Yeah, pet waste is definitely in the trash. Yeah, so, yeah, I want to be clear, zero waste of resources doesn't mean zero trash. It just means stuff that actually has value should be recycled. So unfortunately, pet waste, I have not heard of a way to recycle it or get value out of it. So I think it'll stay in the, any trash category, yeah.
So I only asked that question because I know somebody somewhere out there is going to ask it, and I'm gonna have to give an answer. But then my last one is, when, with all of these improvements we're seeing, what about, when do you foresee rates would be increased and how long? And would that be including at, I'm guessing at the stations, and then also to the customers who have curbside pickup?
Yeah, so we've been working, or we just passed a rate restructure earlier this year at the county. So to be clear, the county is the wholesaler, right, and the cities and the haulers are the retailers, right? So we only control the rates we charge when people cross our scales at our transfer stations. And cities and haulers figure out how to take that and disperse it to the curbside residents, right? So we implemented a restructure where, where we've added a fixed charge to that to try to help mitigate some of these cost increase, or rate increases, right? Before, you know, ninety percent of our revenues comes from that per-ton tipping fee. So obviously, as we start to reduce the amount of tonnage coming through, that would increase the per-ton tipping fee, right? So the idea is that this fixed charge will help kind of mitigate some of that stuff. So that's one thing we tried to implement, you know, it's just, just got passed, and we'll see what the impacts are next year. But really, I think the big impacts, we still have a few years before the big impacts start coming, because that's when that HB seventeen ninety-nine starts to kick in. So some of that organics diversion will start to happen. If EPR passes, that'll still take many years of planning before implementation. So again, we wouldn't see a big drop in say, like plastics or paper for maybe like four or five years. Mixed waste processing, that's kind of, again, the last screen. We would want to implement that even further out. So we're hoping that there's kind of like more of a stair step, I guess, instead of like all the actions occurring all in one year. But that's, the rate restriction has been kind of one way that we've been trying to mitigate some of those, some of those impacts, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for John? All right, John, thank you very much for attending tonight and giving us this presentation about Re Plus. And Amy, it's always a pleasure to see you as well. So thank you for being here tonight. And I both, I hope that you both have a very pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is recognition of our forty-seventh district representatives. If council could please join me in front of the dais. Have a problem hearing me? I'll talk louder. Thanks, Christopher. All right. So I'm gonna invite our representatives up, Representative Enkman and Representative Sullivan. Senator Doss was unable to join us tonight. If you'd like to join us right here in the center. And you hear me? I think it's the speaker. But first off, I want to thank you both for your unending serving and all the countless hours that you've put in to help represent Covington, and not just Covington, but entire surrounding communities. And it's been a pleasure working with you both over these past several years. And we really appreciate everything you've done. Going back to transportation for Highway eighteen, I mean, that that it got done so quickly is amazing. And I know that both of you had, were very instrumental in that. The additional funding for Highway five sixteen, especially at a last minute call for help, and the two of you really got it done. So we really appreciate that. And then I have my notes here that they did. And then while everything else, you know, working with the city, I mean, taking my phone calls at whatever hour and working with Regan and everybody else for both of you, and also entertaining me when I came down there, and all of us, actually entertaining my daughter. So now my middle child wants to come down and see the boat. But it's just really appreciative of how collaborative you both are and, and all the work you did. And Pat, this being your last year, and everything you've done for us going back all these years and all the help that you've done, and the fact that you helped create the city and you were our first mayor. It's, it's just, you're planting the seeds that you've done, that you've both done out here in Covington to help us grow into where we're at today would not be where we are without each of you. And also, I want to thank you. We of the council and the city want to thank you both for helping us with our Pipe Lake infrastructure. And we have a gift here. This one is for Pat. And Deborah, this one's for you. You know, we always have unique gifts for each of you. Last year was a some soil from Soco Park for the funding for that, and this year is for helping us with Pipe Lake, and you're welcome to open it. No, it is glass, so. So that is crush. Pat, for crushing it throughout all these years. And that's from, and this is Nemo for always never giving up and keep going. So we really appreciate what you've both done. And we just thank you for, from the bottoms of our heart. And we're looking forward to continuing working with you. And I'll see you around. I always see you. I always run into you. Fred and Lyran Tusk. So thank you all very much for everything you've done. Anything that either of you would like to say?
I wouldn't say thank you. I always appreciate the fact that you take the time to recognize the work that we have done. I've always enjoyed working with you. I love Covington, bro.
I would say that it's hard to believe it's been eighteen years. It's been a great partnership through the years. I go to Covington Community Park pretty much every day. So, you know, it's just, it's been a great partnership. And I think working together, we've done some pretty good things for the people who live there.
Thank you. And I owe you thanks for being up here and for twisting my arm to run through your own. That, you know, was great, so.
So glad that it worked out.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. We have treats, a reception for both of you for, let's say, fifteen minutes. There's cupcakes, cookies, and we get pictures, I think, and what you picture. So, or you already get them. Okay.
It would be nice if we all could like.
Okay. Welcome back. We are back from our reception for our forty-seventh district representatives. Thank you all very much. And we will go into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. And with that, I don't see anybody here that wants to speak. And is there anybody online that wishes to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand in the audience online, we will have a second public commentary towards the end of our meeting. Next, we'll move into approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C four. Thank you.
Second.
Been moved by Christina and seconded by Beth to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C four. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next up is reports of commissions. First up is Arts Commission. Patty, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Well, as usual, I have super short, short meeting notes here. First of all, at our last meeting, we had a presentation from Daphne Hernandez, Community Development Roadshow Comprehensive Plan Introduction. Anyway, she had tons of really interesting information. We brainstormed with her a little bit, so hopefully we were able to contribute some valuable information. I'll be interested to hear more about what comes from that. For continued business in our commission, we just, as you all know, recently had the Covington Days Festival. We had a balloon wall where everyone got to create their own paper balloon. And the theme of that was what's your joy? And it turned out really well. A lot of kids had a lot of fun with that. A lot of adults had a lot of fun with that, too. But we hope to take all those balloons and turn it into another project. We have an idea, a plan, so we'll see how that works out. But there was a lot of participation, more than we thought, actually. We also had a musical selfie booth that was super popular with the musical theme. We had below-up instruments and one of those backdrops from Amazon. It was really cute. So that was a lot of fun. We are short volunteers for our commission, so it was a lot of work for all of us, but it was worth it. It was fun. And we're also happy to announce that we're moving on with our final wraps and have already submitted the next call out for the next round. So we're super excited to see what comes from that. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll be able to select something and show you all for final approval. We also have Kids Fest coming up and another quick make and take project for that. We're all set for that. And then we were just notified that the Makers Market is having another run in August, and so we are planning on participating in that as well, and also have something lined up for that. And that is it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Patty?
That's it. Two minutes. I win.
Patty, thank you very much. Thanks for being at Covington Days. No, yes.
I want to thank city, Chris and Regan, for helping set up our booth. We had a little snack food at the beginning, and Regan helped us with the table, and a couple of other people helped from the city, and I don't know their names. And I feel terrible that I didn't know who they are, but it was really a call to action, and everybody helped out, helped us out. And so it was a little scary at first, but we managed it, and it was.
Thanks, Patty. We do not have a report from Economic Development Council, Equity, Cultural, and Social Justice Commission. I do not see anybody online for that. Human Services Commission, I don't see anybody there. Parks and Recreation Commission, nope. Planning Commission, nope. And then Youth Council. So we will get reports at our September meeting, but we do not have a fourth meeting, or our second meeting on the fourth week in August. So that concludes our reports of commissions. And next up is new business item number one. Consider an ordinance authorizing the city manager to make emergency purchases and enter into emergency contracts and establish a city policy regarding the same. Mark?
Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner. I have the next two items. And both of these are going to be ordinances that clarify practices that the city has, and also make sure that we have really good processes in place. For this first one with the Emergency Public Works process, as you'll recall, last fall, there was a leak at the police department, and we had to go through a process to make sure that we could waive competitive bidding, so we could make sure to save that structure, and make sure there wasn't a bunch of damage to the, to the building or the contents of the different rooms. And what we found out through staff and working with Public Works is that while we have the authority through, that exists in the code, it's cumbersome to go through that process and walk. it's cumbersome to go through that process and walk through using the chapter two point five oh C and C processes. So what this does, with this ordinance that's for you, it authorizes the city manager to issue a declaration of of emergency, waive competitive bidding and for and and competitive bidding for purchases and for and for contracting for public works. And really go through that and make it more streamlined, because if we have a water main break, we, I don't want us to have to go through and type up a bunch of documents and then have to go, come back to council for approval. We really want to have a set policy procedure that is streamlined and that if something happens, we can get someone contracted as quickly as possible. Because if we, and there will still be accountability for, with council, because once the emergency declaration is made, then it will always come back to council within two weeks to make sure it's entered into the record. So there will never be a time that you have not been informed that there's an emergency situation that we're contracting and making purchases for. So with that, it's pretty straightforward. A lot, this is just making a clarification and housekeeping at it to make it so we can have a more clear process. But if, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you would like.
Council have any questions for Mark?
Joe, just a simple question. When something like this occurs, do we just have a list of contractors that, you know, Reagan will call and get, get a, say, hey, are you able to come fix a water main if we have that or fix the roof? Or is this just one of those whoever picks up the phone first after opening the Yellow Pages?
It can totally depend. We have, we contract with MRSC, the Municipal Research and Services Center. And they have a small works roster that we can choose from for a wide variety of different contracting areas. But what this does is normally if we have a public works project, we have to go through a bid process and procurement, whether that's a solicitation or a competitive bid with sealed bids and it, there's a lot that goes into it in order to avoid, to make sure that there's competitive in the bidding that we get the best price possible. This makes it so in case of an emergency, like when the water main breaks, we can just get someone under contract immediately. And so we don't have, so we can just pick someone and go through that process without the normal, the bureaucratic steps that are in place. And the reason why they want to have, right, it's good to have an emergency process like this, because it really helps for health, life, and safety as well. Because if someone, if if there was a gas line that exploded, you would want to be able to deal with that as quickly as possible in any way you can without having to go back and make sure that you're check, crossing all your Ts and dotting all of your Is. You end up doing that after the fact through this process, through the accountability that comes back to council. There are statutory processes that need to be followed, but those would all be included within a policy that the city would move forward with.
I just wanted to make sure that we, in the rare occasions that we have to use this, that we're just ready to go on hand with, with people work with before or have a list of people that we can trust.
Yes.
With that, I move the motion.
Second.
You move, you seconded?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance authorizing the city manager to take necessary actions to respond to emergencies through contracting and purchasing and adopt policies regarding the same. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I, it's just cleaning up some language, making sure that we have a pro, a better process in place and we don't have to, you know, like Mark said, worry about some of the bureaucratic things that we have to worry about on a usual process. So I'm all for that.
Thank you, Joe. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I just really appreciate that our city staff is both diligent but also very efficient. And I believe it's a very responsible approach to something that could get out of hand easily.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance authorizing the city manager to take necessary actions to respond to emergencies through contracting and purchasing and adopt policies regarding the same. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ordinance has passed. Thank you. And we'll move on to new business item number two is to consider an ordinance relating to the creation of the office of the city attorney, the appointment process for the Covington City Attorney, and ratifying the appointment of the current city attorney. Mark?
Well, you said everything that I'm here to do tonight with this item, Mayor. This is a bit of a strange one and especially having me present it. But to give you a little bit of background, in the fall of twenty twenty-one, there was a case from another local jurisdiction where the mayor and the council got into a very large disagreement about who got to hire the city attorney. The mayor hired one city attorney, council hired another city attorney. And then once that got sorted out, the city refused to pay the council-appointed city attorney. And so then there was a big lawsuit to clarify who has the appointment powers for the city attorney position. And what that we found out is when I read through the case law and looked at what, what, what our code said, I saw that our code provisions were very similar to what was at issue and litigated in that specific jurisdiction. And really, it's in a city like Covington, the power to appoint the city attorney remains with council unless it gives it to the city manager to make that kind of recommend, make that kind of hire. And the past pa, past practice in this city has been the city manager hires the city attorney and moves forward without any other delay and builds the position as quickly as possible. And what we don't want to have in our city is if any kind of a disagreement or any kind of a, of a struggle of who has the appropriate appointment power. And so what the, what the ordinance does is three things to resolve the issue. It creates the office of the city attorney, which is basic, just saying that this is, that they, whoever's the city attorney is will be qualified and will be appointed pursuant to state law and local code. And then the second is to codify the current practice of having the city manager appoint the city attorney, hire, fire in the same way that it currently stands. And three, just to clean up my own hiring by Reagan from back in twenty twenty, it would be ratifying my appointment as the city attorney for the city of Covington. And with that, it's, that's, that's pretty much the basis of it. It's making sure that we clean this up. So there aren't any future disagreements if anything like that comes up. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Council have any questions for Mark?
Here's a quick question. So should it be two ordinances, one for the factual policy and one for ratifying the past actions?
So it, it, it doesn't need to be. In, you're, you're right that normally we would want to avoid two subjects, but these are both related to the same thing, which is making the appointed office, creating it and making sure that what currently exists is is appropriate and that council has had its say in it. And just, I, I failed to mention this earlier, but council also has the option, if it so chooses, to retain the authority to hire on the recommendation of the city manager, the city attorney, or do things such as confirming the city attorney's appointment. That's not the way this is drafted. This is drafted to codify current practices, which are the city manager hires and fires the city attorney at, at will and the city ma, the city attorney serves the pleasure of the city. While representing the entire city and staff and council.
Any other question?
Yeah, I just have a statement as to that. I, I, I'm going to, what ordinance says is, because we can always amend the ordinance going forward if we wanted to. We had a conflict, which I don't think we will. We always retain the authority to amend this or rescind this ordinance, so we could easily take that authority back at any time. So I, I think it's, you know, addressing a potential issue we might have. And I think it just clarifies the current position and who's making the appointing authority from this point until we decide to change it, so.
That's exactly correct. Council can always choose to go back, can always choose to take this power back.
Any other question? I would look for a, I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance creating the office of the city attorney, codifying the city attorney appointment process and ratifying the appointment of the current Covington city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Joe and seconded by that. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Oh, I'll start with a little bit of a joke, just saying that if we don't do this, are we running a risk of everything Mark's done for the last two years, thought, given us legal advice of being wrong all of a sudden? But no, and all honesty, Mark's done a great job. I think this is a good idea for us to codify it and I, I support this because in all honesty, we all know what city they were talking about and I don't want those issues here ever. And this makes sure we don't have at least one of those issues.
Thanks, Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Uh, yes, thank you. So I think, you know, to Joe's point, we don't want to avoid the pitfall that happened in, in another city and having something on record, one way or the other. Reagan's been doing fabulous job selecting that rule. And if there is ever an issue, we certainly can make that decision later. We felt like we needed to change that. And Reagan's a good collaborator as well. So if there was an issue, we would likely work as partners and we uncomfortable with this.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Thank you, Bill.
Mayor Wagner, may I say just one more thing? And just because this involved my specific position as the city attorney, this was vetted through outside counsel and we got recommendations from a law firm that we specifically hired to look at this issue. So this is coming not just from me, but it's coming from someone, from a disinterested third party.
I just want to say, thank you, Mark, for that. Just want to say that the way our former government is set up is we as a council hire and oversee the city manager and it is the city manager's job to oversee everybody else at City Hall. He runs the city and we just pass policy and work up here and we let him do it. So I wouldn't want that done, but thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance creating the office of the city attorney, codifying the city attorney appointment process and ratifying the appointment of the current Covington city attorney. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ordinance has passed. Thank you, Mark. Thank you for bringing this forward to us. With that, we will move into future agenda items. We note that our next meeting is on August ninth. We have another CDS interview. We have a special meeting for strategic planning and then our meeting starts at seven. Does council have anything they would like to see on a future agenda? And also please note that next Tuesday on August second is National Night Out, so make sure that you each have signed up for your neighborhoods that you can help work with. With that, we'll move into council staff comments. We'll start with Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked a question last time about our prior emphasis, what happened with those cases. There's currently one conviction or theft and two have active warrants. So if they are picked up, that judicial process could play out. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Adam. Ethan's not here tonight, so Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
So just one item tonight, and as, as you all know, this, these day and age, we are having some supply chain issues with a number of things. One of those things is being vehicles. And so just, just getting vehicles is a challenge, obviously, for, for many people really right now. And, and one of the things we've been learning and trying to get vehicles is last year, in particular, manufacturers weren't letting dealerships really order stock vehicles. They would only be fulfilling orders of actual vehicles. And so that's put a big strain on the market and in getting vehicles and things along those lines. And so we have been go, so we have, you know, like state bid, things like that, as Mark kind of alluded to and just our processes earlier when we were talking about emergency processes. So obviously, we have things like that in purchasing vehicles as well. And so there's certain times where we can get vehicles and that type of thing. And so there's been challenges on, in, in getting that. And we recently even learned that there's six hundred people just waiting to put orders in on vehicles. And so definitely some challenges in getting that. And, and we recently found out that there are some vehicles that are a, a, a small truck like a Ford Ranger type vehicle that fits perfectly for one of the new positions that we hired for, which in, in the swim department, which was Dan, which is coming in to help us with like new MPDS requirements and that type of thing. And so the, this vehicle though is slight, is, is like thirty-one thousand dollars, right around there. And, and that's over Reagan signing authority. Normally, we would come in and, and ask and bring that through that process. But with the, how quickly these are moving, we felt that it was worth at least asking council if it was okay if we were to get authority to purchase that vehicle. And basically, the funding for that would come out of swim. In fact, we're also have a pretty good feel really good about a grant that we could use to pay for the vehicle as well. And so we're double checking that, but it looks like that is going to happen, that we could pay for that vehicle through this grant. And so but I just wanted to ask for that. Like I said, I, I apologize. Normally, we would go through the regular process, but wanted to ask if that was okay if we did that and moved forward and ordered that vehicle.
Thank you, Dawn. Does council have any questions for Dawn on this? So I'd look for a vote to allow Reagan to use his authority to purchase this vehicle, thirty-one thousand dollars. Can council, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Does that work for you, Mark?
That does. Thank you.
Okay. I would just want to clarify, just to make sure. I mean, it might be, it, it might be a little over like thirty-one, something. I just, yeah, I don't know if we need to be specific about that, if it's thirty-two or just this vehicle around that, around that number. That makes sense. Okay.
I think that's fine. Thanks, Dawn.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Dawn?
Nothing else tonight. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
Hi, good evening, council. I just wanted to let you know briefly that Community Development has provided two offers to two new assistant planners that will be joining our team, coming on hopefully August first. So we will be busy onboarding and, you know, welcoming them into the Covington team. So that's just exciting news I wanted to share with you. Other than that, I have nothing else to report tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations, Selena. Thank you for that great news. Next is Casey.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to share just a little bit of revenue and expenditure information with you. Due to timing, just with, when the blue sheets had to be in and bank recs got done, you won't see your second quarterly reports until September with the August meeting canceled. So I didn't want you to have to wait that long, just to tell you kind of how the funds have been doing. So just the general fund, our total revenues were currently above our budget estimate. So for this time of year through June, we're expecting to see about fifty percent of revenues collected and we're at fifty-seven. And our total expenditures are below our budget. We're at forty-six percent. So general fund is really looking strong. Our street fund, our total revenues are just a little tiny bit below budget, forty-eight point seven. I'm actually surprised to see our gas taxes just dragging it down just a little bit. Maybe people aren't driving as much with those high prices. So total expenditures are below budget estimates at forty-three percent. Development services, our total revenues are below estimates this year at twenty-three point five percent. But our total expenditures are at thirty-two percent. So it's helping offset some of those revenue losses that we're seeing. And I will mention that Development Services will probably see a dip this year a little bit, but that is generally because we brought in extra fund balance last year. And they're just working on those projects and spending that fund balance down this year. So they brought in about an extra five hundred thousand dollars last year. They'll probably spend that five hundred thousand dollars this year. So. And then for the swim fund, total revenues are at fifty-three percent, so looking great. And total expenditures are actually low at twenty-nine percent. So we haven't really seen a big hit from inflation. Our, our supplies and things like that are hitting right at budget. But we're definitely keeping an eye on it. So just wanted to share that with you, so you didn't have to wait till September.
Thank you, Casey. Anybody have any question? All right. Thank you, Casey. Have a great evening. Uh, Mark?
Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner. And thank you to council for bearing with me through those two ordinances tonight. I really appreciate you, your consideration on those. Other than that, there's no executive session and I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that we do with the excessive heat this week, we have the cooling center right here in this room each day until Friday. So not much use today, but red games and cold water and air conditioning ready. So if you know people that need it, please let them know.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Christina?
Yeah, just want to say Covington days was a total blast. The weather was absolutely perfect. I don't know what we would have done if it was, you know, the upcoming weekend. And I'm really looking forward to National Night Out.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
Great. Thank you. Again, yeah, it was fun. My first Covington days in getting a chance to serve ice cream and judge a parade and a watermelon eating contest with some of my other colleagues here. So great time connecting with everybody. Looking forward to National Night Out as well and some of the other upcoming festivities that we have in the city in the next few months.
Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. Constituent brought to my attention that coming down Wax Road South near their real life church, the trees are growing up and you, it's obscuring the stoplights coming south. So we need to take a look and trim those. So and I can show you where that that is afterward. And then the other thing at the last huge town regional fire meeting, the fire board approved what we call it, ordinance or purchase order to buy a new fire station in the RFA. So the fire station 70 in Kent and it serves a section where we had kind of a service hold. So it's expanding the RFA's service and we'll cut down response times to that part of Kent. So we're pretty excited. And the property came in under bid. So that's good too.
Great. Debbie?
Well, I want to say thank you to the city for doing an outstanding job on the Covington days and the parade. From a personal perspective, I was dreading having to ride in a parade. Justin and I had so much fun. We were about halfway through and I said, this is so fun. I don't want this to end. So anyway, everyone that I've heard from had a great time. Again, I got to help judge in the watermelon eating contests and handout the ice cream. One suggestion I had brought to my attention was maybe after hours, after everything shuts down, then have like a beer garden with the, where the music was. Continue on with a beer garden and music. So that was just, just hot. And I'm looking forward to Kids Fest and the other activities we have going on also with August 2nd coming up. And I know somebody signed up to come to my neighborhood too. It was. You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I'm at like six. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I try to get it.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Joe?
I'll start off. Skip, they did vote to approve the payment to the advisory board. I did get some answers to questions that some of us did have. It was only half of the advisory board that is eligible at this time. However, every person on the advisory board at this time is a professional in affordable housing. And because of that, I did vote no, because that was our, our, what was said to me from council. Where that goes from here, I cannot. At our pick meeting, nothing too eventful. We did mention that we are looking for a new executive director of Sound Cities and we did cancel the August meeting. So I will, nothing to report to you guys at pick next month. National Night Out, I is my son's sixth birthday. And I have already been told that there are plans that I'm not aware of and I will not be at National Night Out unfortunately, which saddens me because really I really enjoy National Night Out. I know my kids enjoy National Night Out because I would bring them. But my son's already given us a list of a thousand things he wants to do for his birthday and my wife is accommodated at least 250 of them. So I will see what I can do. But other than that, I enjoyed Covington days. I was really sad on Saturday. I could not get in the dunk tank because the seat broke. As I was, as I was leaving Covington days to take the kids home to come back, it's like come back and work my shift in the city booth. There was someone welding the seat back on. So I would, I came in and was in the dunk tank at 10 a.m. on Sunday morning. It was 61 degrees outside and at least 40 degrees in that tank. And I enjoyed every minute of that hour plus I was in there. And my son enjoyed dunking me at least twice. So looking forward to Covington days again next year. And I'm looking forward to being able to spend even more time with our city and with the people coming in and just and just seeing, having all that fun. And side note, I did see former Mayor Harto there and I was really nice to see her.
Thank you, Joe. Covington days was outstanding. So please, thank you to all staff and everybody that worked. Some staff worked, I guess, 24/7. But it's greatly appreciated and thank you to all the council members who were there. And I heard nothing but positive comments. The parade was outstanding and all the booths, everything, entire event was great. Everybody I talked to was very pleased with how the event was. So please pass on to everybody at city that they did a great job. Tomorrow night is a SCA networking event out in Maple Valley at Lake Wilderness. I think there's still time. I'm not sure you, but get with Krista. If there's, if you still want to go, she can get you signed up. The and then like Joe mentioned, we are still working on hiring a SCA executive director. We've been starting to get interest, not just locally, but from across the country. So we're getting quite a few qualified candidates that are interested in being our executive director. I will have a meeting tomorrow with our SCA executive board. And we'll discuss how we're moving forward with interviews and as to when those will take place. But we're hoping to get somebody on board, I believe by the end of September. So Terrace is doing, Terrace Consulting is doing a very good job. So okay. That is all I have for tonight. And with that, we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Seeing no one, is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand and there is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 8:13. Thank you.